Franklin County Board of County Commission is now back in session. I guess at ten o'clock we'll go for the public here.
Yes, sir. Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm standing in for Mark Carrington today because I wore the tie and he didn't.
Okay.
So, what this is, is every year you all, the board, has an opportunity to adopt a public, a capital improvement plan, capital improvement schedule. The schedule is a wish list. It's not a budgeting item. It's nothing that you have to fret over during your budget process. But this list for the next five years, those items that you would like to see funded, we oftentimes put things on the list that we know we're going to apply for grants because we get points in the grant application if it's on our list. So, it's a sort of mixture of things, but it's a wish list. And if there's anything else you want to add, we can add it. But this is the best wish list that Mark Carrington came up with based upon conversations he's had with you all and over the last few months. So, that's what this is. It's a wish list for things. And you see there that most of them on that list are unfunded.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have no list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you all. It should be party agenda. Number nine.
Number nine?
This isn't.
Okay, there we go.
Alan, I would like to ask something if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
On the second line for 2021, under Parks and Recs, there is $150 for St. George Island Lighthouse Park restroom renovation. TDC has agreed to pursue the loan to completely rebuild and reconstruct that restroom.
Okay.
So, I'd like to take that off, but I would like to leave the $150 there for additional parking spaces on St. George Island.
So, just rename it St. George Island Lighthouse Parking Lot Improvements.
Yep. Parking lot improvements in the business district. What did you ask?
Okay.
Since it is a wish list.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You know, Alan, I think this is a really good monitoring tool. If you really want to see the big picture of the county, it just seems to me that this is, we're looking at it right here. And I presume that this is also sort of the roadmap that Mark Carrington goes by as he considers.
Commissioner, can you turn your microphone on, please?
Okay. I think what I see this as is an excellent big picture for our county. And I see it also as a good guide for the next five years or more. And I would presume that it's also a tool that Mark Carrington uses to monitor a timely grant funding.
Oh, yes, yes.
All of the above.
Yes, that's correct. That's the value of it.
I think this is a real important document.
And it can be modified at any time. It's just that once a year, we have to do it. But if you had other things, it can be added to. It's not a big process. Yes, sir. Well, that one change then of changing the St. George Island bathroom to parking lot improvements, you know, we need a motion approved. Or any public comments?
This is a public here, so we're going to have to, any public comments on it?
Did you put Ryan's Drive in there?
Commissioner, I've just looked at this this morning, so I don't know what is in here.
Ryan's Drive in Caravelle, you know, we need to redo that whole drain, cover, pipe that go across Ryan Drive that sunk in.
Well, now, is Ryan Drive in the county or in the city?
Well, like, we still don't know who it belongs to. We've been battling back and forth to city and the county, so we ain't never said who it belongs to.
We don't have it, we have County 167 with some sidewalk work, but we generally don't list things that are in the cities.
But what I'm saying, they said that we own it and we say that they own it.
Well, we leave this way, again, this is a document that is living, breathing, and you all can amend it anytime. So, I'll defer to the attorney to give us a determination on who owns it, and then we can amend it, or however you want to do it, doesn't matter.
Ryan Drive belongs to the city. That's the same position we've taken. The City of Appalachia's trying to get us to take 12th Street. Caravelle County's trying to get us to take Ryan Drive. They're basing it on some claim made under some DOT map, the way I understand their arguments. But, you know, the cities own the roads inside the municipal boundaries unless the county decides that we're going to adopt it and accept it as a county road and the cities agree we can take it as a county road. And we've never had that agreement with them. I know they've said it's ours, but we haven't agreed that it's ours. So, as far as I'm concerned, Ryan Drive belongs to the City of Caravelle, just like 12th Street within the municipal boundaries of Appalachia belongs to the City of Appalachia Cola. Y'all can agree to do something else differently, but y'all have to mutually agree to do that. They can't force you to take it, and you can't force them to take one of your county roads either. So, that's where we are.
That's what I was thinking. Maybe we could give Allagot Drive one of them. But they don't want it. Okay, so, yeah, it's the same scenario.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this capital improvement.
Wait a minute, we can't do that yet.
Nobody's standing up, sir. Sorry.
We've got the hip on the table if they want to do it. Now, this is a public hearing. It's your time to talk if you want to talk. If they, no public here? No public comments? No public comment? All right. Bledgely to the board.
Mr. Chairman, the Island View Park, is that a project that should be considered in this list?
Well, the Island View Park is a FEMA project, and we don't have any of the FEMA projects on this list because that's sort of separate funding. I mean, if we run into trouble, we can always add it later.
Okay.
But right now, we, this is not FEMA hurricane-related stuff.
Okay.
Bledgely to the board.
I mean, will we adopt this document?
Second.
I got motion on the floor by Commissioner Perk, second by Commissioner Masser. All in paper?
Aye.
All opposed? If passed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up on those comments about Ryan Drive and 12th Street in Appalachia. Just because the municipalities own those roads and we do not own it, it doesn't mean that we can't, as we have in the past through, you know, grant applications and things of that nature, as it fits into the county plan. I mean, we've helped them in the past. We could help them in the future. But that doesn't mean that we own the roads. So, I think that's where part of the confusion may have been created, is we have helped both of the municipalities, but we've never accepted any ownership of either of those roads, Ryan Drive or 12th Street in Appalachia within the municipal boundaries. So, just wanted to add that comment for the record.
Mr. Chairman, and Attorney General, that's because presently, nobody in the municipalities have anybody that's a LAP certified. Isn't that correct? That's why the county does it on their behalf, like we're doing the sidewalk project?
As far as helping with the grants, yes, sir. I believe that is the reason. The county has the only LAP certified person that's able to qualify for those grants.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, we'd have to get the county to help write the grant to do Ryan's Drive, right?
That's a possibility that the board has available to it. I don't know how the availability of grants and the need for the county to use those grants as it balances with either of the two cities. That I don't know. That's something that is a policy decision y'all have to make in conjunction with your administrative staff at planning and zoning. But is it a possibility? Yes.
Yes, Commissioner. Attorney's right. If it meets the FDOT requirements to be a LAP project, yes, the county will assist in getting it done.
Will you check on that? Because it ain't long before it's going to cave completely in. We done rebuilt it like two or three times.
Is there any of the FDOT projects?
Them pipes are putting there in the 40s.
Okay. Next on the agenda will be Mr. David Walker with Wayne Memorial Hospital.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good. I trust you all had a great Thanksgiving. My name is David Walker, interim CEO of Wayne Memorial Hospital. I'm just going to give you an overview of some of the things that we've been doing, you know, for the last three months. We're in the midst of our annual audit, hospital audit report. It is being done by Carl Riggs and Ingram. That report should be wrapping up shortly, and I will ask Carl Riggs and Ingram to give a presentation of the findings to the county commission. I think that this report will really tells us, tell us where we at with our finances. So, I'm really, really looking forward to that. In October 2019, we requested some additional funds that we thought we may need to meet our payroll. I'm pleased to admit that we did not have to request that from the county. You know, we made it, you know, limping, but we made it. So, that's a good thing.
That is a good thing.
You know, we have to get in the idea really of monitoring our expenses. We can't spend more than we make. We got to live within our means. We want to try to increase our revenue and minimize our expenses. So, that's some of the things that I'm looking at and working on as well. Our managed care contracting update, we're in the process of renegotiating our managed care contracts. We just renegotiated Blue Cross Blue Shield for a higher rate, and we'll be looking to do some other contracts that we have also. We'll be looking at our third-party contracts as well. We partnered with Florida Department of Health, State Rural Health Office. They assisted us with applying for a grant with the Center for Optimizing Rural Health at Texas A&amp;M University. Texas A&amp;M has a Vulnerable Rural Hospital Assistance Program, which offers technical assistance to vulnerable hospitals. Notifications of grant awards will be released at the end of December 2019. We're partnering with the local health department to provide hepatitis and rabies vaccinations for individuals that may need treatment so we can treat those individuals in county instead of them having to go to the neighboring counties to receive that treatment. We're also looking to update our IT equipment. Our IT equipment is very outdated. One of the more pressing needs is to update our email software protection against phishing and outside threats. We have a quote for $9,516 to update our emails and wear protections. We'll take care of that within our budget at the hospital. We also been in conversation with FSU College School of Medicine. They've been very, very engaging with the hospital. We had a great phone call with Dr. Brian Horan, FSU College of Medicine Rural Health Policy and Research Center. He is interested in partnering with us to jointly apply for federal grants which targets population-based health initiatives in rural communities. We also is looking to expand our outpatient radiology, respiratory, and lab services in Appalachia Cola. We currently closed down for business at 4:30. We're looking to expand at 8:00 because we have those individuals, those technicians on campus at the hospital there. So, we just probably want to expand it into the evening hours, just looking for additional revenue. One of the things that I believe we need to do at the hospital is seek and go out there and diversify our funding sources. We need to really look at outside funding and maybe look at the money that we get from the county, a portion of that to be put into reserves, you know, so we can help our cash reserves to grow. I will continue to be, you know, just looking beyond Franklin County for help for our hospital. And once again, you know, thank you for the opportunity, you know, to serve you and the hospital board. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
There, go ahead.
I just wanted to just offer some praise, if you will. I think that pursuing those managed care contracts is another pathway of access to our hospitals. Sometimes it isn't competencies that gets us your patients, it's what insurances do you take? And especially that you're beefing up the revenue side of those contracts. Many of them have been stale for many years, and I'm really glad to see you doing that. I'm also revitalized by the fact that the FSU School of Medicine is actively interested and involved here in our county. I think that is going to just add a huge amount of lifeblood and medical talent to this county that we've never seen before. And I'm just very pleased about these points. Thanks.
Yeah, tell them they can run a session right in the hospital.
Yeah, they can. Yeah, we want to just open up our hospital, you know, to whatever they want to partner with us on.
I guess on another note, you and Mr. Creamwell, y'all know about when we're going to hear a verdict from the?
Yeah, the public here is, yeah. The hospital board chairman wants to make a decision, you know, by this month, December, you know, no later than the first of the year. But hopefully, this month or the beginning of the first of the year, we'll make a decision.
All right. Anybody got anything else? Keep up the good work.
Well, thank you. I have Nicole coming.
Okay. Next will be the plant operation. Mr. Cole Sheppy?
Good morning, gentlemen. Nicole Sheppy, plant operations for the hospital. I just, one piece of news is the OCA Stage Two stand-up review was completed on November 18th, and it was a good review. We do not have the official letter yet, but we are anticipating receiving it soon. Other than that, I can introduce the slideshow for you. Keith Bassett with Synergy, NDS.
Okay.
Keith Bassett, FMIT Synergy. This morning, I'm on review, not just Wayne's Hospital stuff, but everything that FMIT has done since the hurricane for the county.
Tell me he's working.
All right. So, quick overview of what FMIT and Turnkey does, the impacts to the assets that you had damaged in emergency stabilization we did, and accomplishments to this date. So, what FMIT Turnkey recovery program is, is we have like ride-out teams that'll come before the storm, ride the storm out with you in-house at your EOC, and then as soon as it's safe, get out, start evaluating damages to help identify what the county would need to get critical infrastructures back up and running. Example would be putting generators at lift stations to keep a septic system or a sewer system running. As we know, Michael was the most powerful storm to hit the Panhandle, strongest to hit the US with sustained winds of 161 miles per hour, caused roughly $4 million in damages to insured assets that we manage through Turnkey Recovery Program, but it's not including all of the damages that occurred. Those are just the amount to the Turnkey projects that we did. We had people come out, do damage assessments at locations. It's real time. I know Aaron was getting bombarded with emails as damage assessments were being done. They were identifying what was damaged at your assets and what needed to be done. We had contractors pre-staged outside of the target zone, and then as soon as we could get them in, we had set up a big staging area in Panama City where contractors were then sending out their rental equipment. I know within 48 hours of having this set up, we had over 100 generators out in the Panhandle region to get critical things up and running, to get these cities, municipalities back up and going, including Franklin County. Some of our projects that we completed, the recycling center, we reskin the whole building, new roof, new roof over the awning where they would store the plastics, a couple of trailers out there at the Sheriff's Department. We replaced one entirely. And then also, we performed all the interior repairs on the classroom trailer as well. Those are complete. And then Wayne's Hospital, emergency stabilization, roughly $350,000 was spent on emergency services to secure the roof temporarily, get it dried out, get it cleaned up from inside from all the damage that occurred. And then we brought in the temporary facilities, which included a food trailer, office, sleep trailers, laboratory. That way, we could keep Wayne's Hospital open while we did the roof project, which kept employees working, kept the health services here in the community that needed to be here. We are about finished with that project. I anticipate by the 13th being 100% complete with the project and everybody moves back into the hospital with where they need to be. Some of the temporary facilities will still be here as there's different lead times for the company to come and get those out. And as soon as I can give a firm date to them, then they schedule it. Most of them are seven, are five to seven days. One of them, I know I have a 14-day lead time on. But as soon as we get everybody back in the hospital, we'll start making those calls and getting everything tore down and act like we were never here, and you'll have a new roof on the hospital. Work completed to date, we're at $2.8 million. Out of that, none of that has been a cost incurred to the county. The only cost that is incurred to the county will be the named storm deductibles, which are reimbursable by FEMA, which Aaron is working with FEMA on. Your total deductibles was $174,953. It's just, under your policy, you have an extra expense endorsement, which does not go to the limit of the actual location. So, Wayne's Hospital was insured for $3 million, which meant you had $3 million, up to $3 million to do repairs. Your extra expense endorsement, though, was where we were able to get all of these temporary facilities in in order to keep the hospital open, keep people working, keep the health services here. And we spent roughly $600,000 out of that extra expense endorsement. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd like to make a comment. I've received public comments from several different people as to amount of work y'all are doing, working. They said seven days a week.
Yes, sir.
Late, real late in the evening. I mean, they, the public is, whether you know it or not, the public does keep an eye on what's going on. They commented to me that they were, you guys put in some hard hours, worked a lot of, you know, extra time trying to get this done and expedite the project. And I want you to know that we appreciate that and let you know that the public brought that to my attention. So, it's not only the Commissioners that are aware of what you're doing, it's the public itself is watching what you're doing. You've done a really good job, and we all appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Nick Harper was the day-to-day field PM out there, and he was staying on top of the contractors, making sure everything was going in a smooth transition from one phase to the other, and he's done an excellent job at that for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say we are extremely impressed and grateful, you know, to have Synergy on our team because we just could not have done it. You know, they went out and they did damage assessments of every single damaged location, and we were able to use that with our FEMA project orders as well because they actually assessed the damage, gave us an estimate of value, how much, you know, repairs were needed, and described the damage in every single location. And that happened within, I would say, about, you know, probably two weeks after the storm. We had every single location somebody had visited. And we don't have the staff for it, so we don't know how we would have done it without you.
Just to lay it on some more, Commissioners, I got to say, Keith, if you remember when we first talked about this, the first few meetings we had, it was like, oh, my God, this has never worked. This is the worst thing in the world. And I waited about a month and a half, and I started asking, and everybody was like, it's wonderful. So, I don't know what magic you do, son, but whatever it is you do, you did a very good job.
We got some nick, that's it.
Yeah. I mean, I got the nurses and emergency room doctors telling me, they went from, it'll never work, to, oh, it's fine. We love it. I'm like, okay, whatever, just as long as it keeps working, I'm with you. So, thank you all so much.
And they all worked hard. They were trying.
Mr. Chairman. I live on the street, where I live on Ninth Street. I ain't come on your jobs like, I don't mess with nobody on the jobs, but I could hear, I could hear the noise.
Cut the light weight off?
Y'all was steady working. Y'all were getting, I know you were getting something done. I know you were getting something done.
I just, I was impressed to read that you stayed with that hospital during the storm. You were on-site during that time, and I thought that was impressive as well, to just see what the damage was that was occurring and be able to follow through to the end product. And just hang in there with us as we consider what we're going to do for new healthcare facility. Your thinking and your expertise and everything will be certainly welcomed.
Thank you.
Y'all keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Done a good job.
Thank you all.
Okay, now, next will be the EMS director.
Richard Lewis. Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Lewis, EMS director. I wanted to give a quick update on the status of our fleet and updates. Right now, we are currently running three primary trucks. Our, two of our primary trucks are the 2015 and 2016 models. Both of them have surpassed 150,000 miles. Our two backup trucks, which one of them was a primary, we got the new truck, it is now a backup. We have a 2000 model and a 2008 model that have both surpassed 200,000. We are averaging about 5,000 miles per month per primary truck and about 2,000 to 3,000 per month per backup truck. As of November 18th, our 2019 Ford F-350 was put into service, the one that we ordered about a year ago. We have it up and running, and it is stationed here in Appalachia. It is updated with all the new equipment and all the new standards. That being said, we have a lead time of about nine to 12 months from the day we order a truck, and we need to definitely keep that in mind pending the outcome of the USDA grant that we're waiting on. So, if you have any questions or concerns?
That's a new one I've done.
Yes, sir.
It's cool.
It is. It's nice. The guys really like it.
A lift.
Yeah, and the new lift system is definitely a good safety for the crew and the patient. Yep. It is.
I don't know if I can find a trailer.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Richard, is there any way you could possibly find out an answer for us, maybe at a future meeting, what it would take, and if it's possible, for us to add that same kind of lift system to all of our primary trucks if they don't currently have it?
Yes, sir. I'll look into it, and I'll give you an update on the feasibility of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything for me? Okay, keep up the good work.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep Franklin County's, the EMS. All right. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Angela Webster, Community Action.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Angela Webster. I work for Capital Area Community Action Agency, and our agency has assisted with the Lima Fire Survivors. We originally provided temporary housing for 22 of the survivors, and of those 22, we only have seven still currently in camper trailers, which I think is very good. We helped five of those families secure permanent housing. We have 12 pending cases. Of the 12 pending cases, four of these families are CDBG eligible contingent upon mortgage, go ahead. Oh.
Thank you.
Contingent upon modifications to mortgages as well as securing land in compliance with the grants. We have five of these families who are interested in keeping their campers. However, we are awaiting appraisals before that can happen. And that's basically all I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
When you said in the written, in keeping them, what do you mean by?
To transfer titles to receive a camper as replacement for loss of residence, being that campers were what they originally had prior to the fire.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Question, Mr. Chairman. I don't understand because you can't live in a camper on a one-acre lot in Franklin County. Now, some of them have accepted a trailer but moved into an RV park.
That is correct.
Is that what these five people are intending to do?
They have to.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That is a requirement, yes.
Okay.
That is a requirement, that they have to show that they have legal space, space that is legally permitted for campers.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make sure they knew they couldn't live on.
Oh, yes, sir.
In a camper.
I stress that to them.
Okay. Just want to put that out there for the public. That's the only question I have.
Anybody got anything else for Ms. Webster?
I have a question. I just want to ask Ms. Webster to stand by when Ms. Belcher comes up here right behind her, just in case we get into a discussion of, you know, of who goes where. Let's put it that way.
Will do.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question, if I may.
Go ahead.
First, Mr. Chair, Paris, thank you for asking that question because I had the same question in mind about the legal use of the campers. But I would also like to ask, and maybe we can get it in a future report, I know that we're getting closer to everybody being helped, which is what I believe the intent of this board was. Thank you for the part that y'all played in that. But I think we need to make sure kind of where we're at with your organization. In other words, is there $20,000 left in donated funds? And I know it's going to be cleared up as all the rest of this is done. We're not trying to completely end it, but I think this board needs to know for sure where we're at, and that's not on the report we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work, Ms. Webster.
Yes, sir.
Y'all doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, they hang around just in case. Next on the agenda will be CDBG. Next on the agenda will be CDBG Administrator, Ms. Debbie Belcher.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have, you have my report, right?
Yeah, let me get your name for the record.
Okay, Debbie Belcher, the county's CDBG Administrator Consultant.
Okay. Go ahead.
So you have your, my report in your agenda packet. I have some action items. One is to approve CDBG funding for Annie and William Banks to purchase a new home from Ironwood Homes at Perry. The purchase amount is $76,335.56. And we would also need authorization to include up to 500 if necessary. I don't expect there to be any unknown items, but just in case. And also for the Doc Stanton recording fee.
Okay, now this one of the replacement in the file.
Yes, sir. This is actually the one that the board approved doing. They have one of the, it was not a sheriff's home, but it's the same type of home that was donated by a church. And that home will go to Jason Melander as approved by the board about a month ago. His home burned and they will take care of all the setup costs. And it's already, they have the utilities, everything good to go. And it's, there was already a home there. They own the property, that, all the arrangements are made. And so they will take care of all of that.
Okay, now, they gonna be in the right zoning?
Yes, sir. The zoning's okay. The utilities are there. The, they have the funds ready. The owners themselves will pay all the costs.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masser. Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor? All opposed? A pass or none?
And then we have two homeowner applications for approval. This is not approving the contract. This is, as I usually do, as I always do, I bring you the applications that appear eligible. Kathy Hill, 773 Buck Street, she is still living in her mobile home, but it was damaged and it's in bad condition. And she recently completed a divorce and got the quitclaim deed from, from her ex-husband. So she is the owner. She's, has title. She's good to go in that regard. I have submitted the environmental review. Do not have it yet. But we did go ahead and put her home in the bid package that we recently did, the same one that we got the results for, for the banks. We included several homes in that bid package. So when we get the environmental clearance, I'll bring that back to you for approval of the funding. But I just wanted board action to approve her application.
Second. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masser, second by Commissioner Jones. Want to a little discussion, I want to ask, I got to ask a lawyer a question. On a situation like this, they got it to vote in order for us not to be liable for buying two trailers. We won't have to buy two trailers.
Let me make sure I understand the facts because I'm hearing this live for the first time this morning.
I meant, it was a husband and wife. They got it to vote. So she gonna get a trailer now. Can, I'm trying to see what, can he come back later on and say he need a trailer?
Well, I mean, we can't stop him from coming back and asking. Doesn't mean we have to say yes. But, so the facts are, the husband and wife had a residence that was otherwise qualified within the burn area.
Yes.
Married at the time of the fire. They've since moved on and got a divorce. Have you had this conversation with them that they're not entitled to two houses or entitled to one house?
Yes. And he, I don't think has resided there for some time. So I don't think he was residing there at the time of the fire. So he wasn't displaced. And they, they had other property and they settled, they split it that way. So she is the owner of this property and he's the owner of other property.
The property that she got out of the divorce proceeding is the property that's located within the fire.
Right. And it's the, and it's the one that had their mobile home on it, has it on it. And the other did not. So, but they, that was their settlement in the divorce.
Commissioner, I have a paucity of DART. I mean, a lack of a lot of information here. But based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like they resolved this matter between themselves during the divorce as to who's going to get the property that is qualified to receive the free trailer. If he comes back and, and tries to seek a second trailer, then we'll just have to deal with that when it comes up. But it doesn't sound to me like he's got much of a leg to stand on. But again, there's not a lot of facts on the table right now for me to look at.
Y'all ready to vote?
Which item are we talking about? Item number two?
That, yes, the, it is the second page at the top, Kathy Hill.
Is this Mary Lou Thomas we're talking about?
No, Kathy Hill.
Okay, I thought, okay. Miss Mary Lou is next. Okay. Okay, that's, they got a. You got a motion and a second.
We all ready.
Yeah, we got the vote.
Okay.
In the mood, in the mood discussion? All in favor? All opposed? A pass or none?
And the next one is Mary Louise Thomas. She was formerly Shiver. She and her ex-husband were already divorced at the time of the fire. Unfortunately, their divorce settlement did not split the property ownership. So she is remarried, living in a camper with her husband and infant grandson that she, that they have custody of. And so I'm recommending that we proceed. There is no ideal situation for security on this with her. She, I mean, I think she is owner of the property, although her ex-husband owns it, is with her. So I know mortgages are not normally done with one party and not the other. And so that, that is, that's something to consider. The other issue is if you, I don't know if we could record a mortgage that says that it is security for her interest in the property and that it does not encumber him. I don't know if we can just word it differently. You know, the, the fact is, we're not thinking that this is going to be a situation where we're going to recover funds, but, you know, just to keep, in keeping with your policy. The other, another option that the county could consider is when people buy mobile homes and have a mortgage, it is commonplace for the title to go to the mortgage, mortgage holder, in this case, the county. And you, and then the title is then transferred to the occupant, the owner at the time the mortgage is, is completed. So that, that is an option that you have. You know, it would be, you would hold title on the actual mobile home. You wouldn't place it against the property.
Mr. Seoul?
Yeah. Less than ideal is a mild statement, I think. So they got a divorce. They did not resolve the ownership of the property in the divorce?
Nope.
Okay. What that would mean is if they own property as husband and wife, and I'll, again, I'm going to make that assumption that they held title to, to the real property during the marriage as husband and wife.
Correct.
And they acquired title during the marriage. And then they got a divorce. And for whatever reason, they did not resolve the ownership to the title to the real property in the divorce. That means that he has an undivided one-half interest as a tenant in common. She has a one-half interest as a tenant in common. That, that's just the default legal result if you don't resolve the ownership of real estate during a divorce. You, you can have a situation like that happen. What you should do, the county should not take back, what she's suggesting is you retain title to the trailer, take back a chattel mortgage on just the trailer itself and don't get a mortgage on the real property. My suggestion would be different from that because if you own the title to it, then you're responsible for whatever happens on the inside. You know, if someone gets hurt, someone gets killed. I mean, that's just, that, that's something I do not recommend that you do. What you can do, if, if, I don't know what the relationship between these people are. I'm not even sure that I know who these people are. But there are many times in a real estate transaction where the husband and the wife are the two owners, the joint owners, they will both sign the mortgage, but only one person signs the promissory note. So in this case, you could have the ex-wife and the ex-husband sign the mortgage, have the, the current owner of the property, the ex-wife, sign the promissory note, which means that the gentleman himself doesn't have any obligation to repay the note. That's how things would be handled in a commercial transaction. And it's routinely done. I close many of those types of transactions every year. Here, you've got a ship mortgage. It's how much?
CDBG. It would be a CDBG.
For how many years?
Uh, 10.
10?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And they, they currently have housing that they're in now?
They're in a camper. The, the Mary Louise Thomas is in a camper with her husband and
She's remarried then?
Yes.
Okay. And what have they done to try and resolve the ownership with the ex-husband, his one-half interest?
She has not been able to communicate with him. And so I don't know. I mean, she's been the one paying the taxes and.
Yeah, that doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, as far as welfare, the grandson, I've encouraged her to try to, you know, appeal to that sense. And that hasn't happened.
Yeah, that's why I got out of family law.
Yeah.
These types of situations. It's horrible. What, what you could do, I mean, and again, less than ideal is an understatement, but of the options available to you, you do not want a chattel mortgage where the county continues to hold title to the property, which is the mobile home. My suggestion as the default is let's go back and make another attempt at getting a, a proper mortgage. If not, then we can always have her mortgage, her one-half interest, your worst-case scenario. If you should ever foreclose on a, on a CDBG mortgage or a ship loan, which you frankly, you've never done, you would end up being a half-owner with whoever this ex-spouse is and there are remedies to take care of divesting yourselves of title. So the county would not be stuck with the property. You would basically put it on the courthouse steps and sell it. So you do have options and remedies available. So my suggestion is go on with a, a standard mortgage, signed by the ex-wife, apparently maybe or maybe not by the ex-husband, and move on.
Mr. Chairman, ain't there a requirement of this program that you retain title to that property?
Well, she, she.
You can't owe one person to one standard and then another standard for somebody. I mean, we got rules and regulations you got to follow. And we cannot go through and make exceptions to the rules for every individual that wants to, I mean, I don't understand how you do that.
Well, she is the.
Attorney that, I don't want that trailer title to this county because somebody, Lord forbid the thing catch fire and burn everybody up. Well, the county, that's the county's trailer. I don't want to go down that path. Myself and, and attorney advisors are saying. But I'm just saying, we cannot go through each one of these things and make exceptions to every rule that's been in the rule book. How do we, how, how, how do you say you're treating people fair when you do that?
Well, she is an, she is one of the owners.
I thought some of these people were turned down because they did not own the property.
Some of them didn't own it at all.
That's what I'm talking about.
She and her, she and her ex-husband are the owners.
Well, they need to get that settled. If they're not willing to settle it for one of them to have a place to live, that, you know, that don't make much sense either. If he's not been there and don't live there. I mean, I just don't know how you make exceptions to every rule. I mean, I, how does people get treated fairly and equitably when you do that? I thought that's why we drafted the rules before we started the program. And you had to comply with the rules. You got to pay your taxes, got to be paid on the property. There's a set of rules there that you have to abide with. And if I look through this list you give me here, some of these properties got eight years behind in taxes. Well, they don't qualify.
Correct, at that time, yes.
So you can't make exceptions for every person's different. I mean, I, I don't understand where we going and how we get there. If we don't, if everybody's not, you know, one of these people you got on here, excessive trash in the yard. Well, that was one of the rules. You had to clean it up. You can only have one home per acre. I mean, there's a list of rules that goes along with this program. And it seems like to me that every time something comes up, somebody's requesting that we change the rule. You can't. People aren't treated fairly and equally by changing the rules over and over and over again. These are the rules. You know what the rules are. You should follow the rules and come into compliance. And then you're entitled to participate in the program. I don't understand. I, I just don't understand, I guess. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I just don't understand. If you got a set of rules and you got to get all the junk off the property and you can't have one mobile home per acre, not 10 sheds and four campers and all that. If you got all that, then you don't comply with the rules of the program. I mean, I don't know how else to, I, I don't know. That's just my thoughts on it. I don't know. I don't know what the rest of the board is thinking, but that's the way I see it.
We can try to see if she can make one more attempt to get, say, a quitclaim, quitclaim from her ex or his agreement to sign the mortgage. I have done mortgages in the past where you have what's called the non-occupant owner. And, and in those cases, what we say is that the default of the mortgage would be if the occupying owner moves out or transfers or whatever, then the, in other words, that the, the person who's not occupying it doesn't qualify the assistance. It happens sometimes where like there's siblings, for example, might own the property. And you do the mortgage that says that, that person is agreeing to the mortgage on the property. And, but they're not the one that qualified for the assistance.
Well, I mean, it's like the scenario Mr. Lockhart brought up while we go, where the husband gonna come back. Well, they settled that in their divorce. She got the piece of property that, that had the trailer on it. He got the piece of property that never had a trailer on it. So in my opinion, he don't qualify for the program because the piece of property he's got never had a trailer to start with during the fire.
Right.
So he don't qualify. That would be my rationale of that particular situation. I mean, that's, they need to work that out on their own. If he wants to give her that piece of property, then they can figure out how much she owes him for his half of that property when she gets the settlement that's supposedly coming down the line. And she pays him X amount of dollars out of that settlement for that piece of property he gave her. It's kind of simple, you know. You understand what I'm saying?
I, I do.
She's done married and living with another man. That ain't for the county to get into. But that's, they need to get that stuff together and not make exceptions to every rule. I mean, not hard to figure out. But that's not for the board to do, you know. I understand that. I'm just saying.
The best thing to do is keep it real. Go by the rules. Go by the rules.
Well, that's why this was not one of the first ones presented. When we first got started.
We gonna, it's coming up again to us. It's coming up again. It's gonna, hey, you let such and such one lead such and such.
Yeah. Well, again, the only reason I'm presenting this is because she is, it's not like she doesn't own it. She does own it, but she has it ownership split, shared ownership.
You need to go back and tell them to work that out. He sell her his half of that property. And they sign a note saying when we get our settlement, you get X amount of dollars because you did on half of this, you know what I'm saying? And work that out on their own. Him sign over the quitclaim deed. And she's the sole owner. Now she's in compliance to the program. That's not for the county to change the rules every time something comes up. Over and along, we going around in a big old circle like Mr. Lockhart said. Mr. Lockhart said, well, you wouldn't do it for me, but you did it for them. So they come back and I would, and it just turns into a mess. Is he living in East Park?
No, he doesn't even live in this county anymore.
He know the way back though.
It's not my district. It's not my district.
What y'all think? What y'all want to do?
Well, let's see if she can get ahold of him and get to his name because we got more of some stuff coming up too.
All right, let's try to kind of work on that one a little more.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. The direction of the board is try, try again with the, uh, resolution of the ownership.
Maintain the standards.
Yeah.
Okay.
Give her a couple of the rules and she can give it to him.
All right. Well, she knows, she knows what the rules are, so, um, okay, all right. Okay, and I think, uh, that was it for what I had, uh, for you today. When we get environmental clearance, um, I'll come back for, um, Kathy Hill and, um, I may have another, there's another one that is an ownership situation, um, that I'm not bringing to you yet that, um,
They need to clarify it, just like we talked about this other one. Go ahead.
Yeah, the other one, I'm, I'm not even close to bringing to you, but it, it is in the works, um, with their ownership. She's a widow and blah, blah, blah. So, uh, we're, we're working on that one. Just going to let you know if there's anybody else on the horizon, um, as far as that, that, uh, ownership transfer. I, I think that was the only one at this particular time she had, uh, who's an owner occupant. Okay?
Next on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Next on, okay. Next on the agenda will be
He does, but he's on a call with FEMA. Don't be, clerk has a report.
Where we at? Where we at? Clerk of the court, Ms. Marsha Johnson. All righty, thank you. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Adam Hill.
Mr. Pierce has one action item, but I think he's on a conference call with Clay with FEMA, so if you don't mind, do you want me?
Yes.
Go, it would mind if he should pop back in in a second and I'll come back to him.
Well, we'll go. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Morone.
Commissioners, if, if you would, uh, Ms., Ms. Doris Evans is here. She's our SBA, uh, point person in the county. She was on, she planned to be here for public comments just to give you a three-minute update. However, she said they closed the road between here and Panama City, so she missed public comments. Is there any way you could, she just wants to give you an update on SBA in, in the county, what they're doing. Is that?
Come on up.
I'm going to get Mr. Pierce all the while. So we give Ms. Evans
A small business.
Hello, and thank you very much, um, for giving me the three minutes. My name is Doris Evans. I'm with the SBA Office of Disaster Assistance. And I've been assigned to do outreach in Franklin County and three contiguous counties as a result of Hurricane Dorian that came through this area from August 28th through September the 9th. Uh, the governor of Florida requested disaster assistance and in regards to, uh, damages that were done. Uh, what was approved was a agency declaration with 26 counties and 19 contiguous counties for economic assistance only, working capital. And Franklin County is one of the primary counties. That's why I'm here, reaching out to the businesses and nonprofits that may have been affected. Uh, hotels, restaurants, anyone, any business or maybe some of the nonprofit, uh, organizations in the community may have been impacted by it. If so, then they're eligible to borrow from the SBA, our federal disaster low-interest loan program, uh, working capital. The deadline is actually August 13th, so businesses and nonprofits do have quite a bit of time to assess what those damages are. And, uh, as part of my outreach, um, I've visited your offices and I've left information for you. And also reaching out to the chambers and to any other organizations here in Franklin County as well as the city of Apalachicola. Okay, that's a mouthful. Uh, in, in regards to getting that message out, you know, to you regarding the disaster assistance. And businesses that were affected, they can borrow up to $2 million, uh, to help them get back on their feet. And once again, it's strictly for working capital, not for physical, um, damages, only working capital. And in addition to the 26 counties, there were 19 contiguous counties, I think I said that. And in addition to, uh, Franklin County, I'm also reaching out my other contiguous counties of Guff, Liberty, Wakakula, and, uh, let's see, did I say that right?
[inaudible]
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm butchering everything. Okay. So those were, uh, you know, my counties that I was reaching out, and Liberty.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Evans, what is the average interest rate on an SBA loan?
Uh, the, the average interest rate is 4% on this particular business loan. The economic injury loan, it's 4%. You can get up to 30 years to pay it back.
Okay.
We appreciate the info, ma'am.
Thank you for having me and Michael, thank you for working me in.
No problem, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else here? Okay, next on the agenda.
And they're still on that call, so I'll, I'll go to my report. Hopefully they'll be through.
Mr. Michael Morone.
All right, Commissioners, I'm close to the back. I'm item number 17. I'll start off with 17A. My action items, uh, attaching to the agenda packet is a career source modification to work site agreement. The original agreement that allows the placement of career source-funded workers within different county departments to assist with Hurricane Michael recovery has expired. The modification will extend the end date of the agreement to September 30th, 2020, or until the funds are no longer available. I see board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the career source modification to work site agreement.
So moved.
Sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
The next item would be, at a recent meeting, the board authorized the installation of a security access system control at the Olin Buddy Ward Seafood Landing Park and requested that I get additional codes for security and camera CCTV systems for any of our parks, boat ramps, or other locations that have been burglarized or are open to vandalism and burglary. This action was based on an attempt to enter, to enter and burglarize the museum building at the Seafood Landing Park. I received two CCTV security system proposals for the park that I'm currently reviewing. If the board is willing, I would ask for approval to spend up to $5,700 to purchase the equipment and have that, uh, equipment installed at the park. I should complete my review by week's end and would like to have the vendor order the equipment prior to the board's next meeting. The project costs will be paid from the Parks and Recreation Department. Board action to authorize the 57, up to, up to 5,700 for the purchase and installation of a CCTV security system at the landing park.
Senator.
Sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, what about the camera system in the Abercrombie?
I'll be next, Commissioner. I'm trying to do them one by one as we get along. I'll, I'll say this to you.
We've been waiting for over a year.
I know, the Abercrombie one.
I'm ready for something to move. The board done voted to approve the funds to do it, so I'm ready for something to move out of it.
I'll get it done. I'll have to come back with additional boring, uh, calls, but yeah, I'll get it done, Commissioner.
It is what it is.
Yes, sir.
I'm ready for that project to move.
Okay, working that next.
Right.
Uh, C, City of Carebel has requested a meeting to discuss the board's request to have each city contribute 3,500 this budget year and 7,000 next budget year, along with redirecting all animal control calls, calls to their local police departments. Once their police officer responds to the call, he will determine if the county's animal control officer is needed. This request is based on the county's animal control officer spending, uh, ample time in both cities, so much time in both cities, that the board was forced to add a part-time officer to its department. In addition, the animal control officers are responding to calls that are actually human, I keep using that term, but human conflict issues that results in threat to the animal control officer. Are there any specific items the board would like me to discuss at this meeting? The meeting is scheduled for Friday, December 6th here in my office at 10 o'clock, and the city of Apalachicola is also invited to attend this meeting.
Well, you tell me, in my opinion, you know, just tell me, you can either get a boat or get their own officer.
As I understand it, Commissioner, what you want is a, is a, uh, MOU that basically states to, to, to continue with the current coverage, not to extend or improve or change the coverage in any way, the current coverage, that they contribute this amount of money. More importantly, their police departments respond first and then call out our animal control officers. That was, that's my understanding, and I want to make sure we're still on, on the same page with that.
Yeah, we on the same, okay. It like, all I'm saying is, we made, we wrote them a letter. We told them what we was offering. If they don't want it, let them get their own. That's my opinion, you know. We got four more up here, but that, that, that's how I feel about it. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to comment on this. I think the original discussion, Mike, was we hired another officer because we were getting so many calls from within the two municipalities.
Mm-hmm.
If each city contributed, uh, $3,500, that's $7,000.
Mm-hmm.
That ain't even going to pay for part-time because the county employee starts at 25,000.
The part-time was 14,000, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I mean, so, I, I, I don't see how they can hire their own officer and provide this service within each city for that amount of money. So I, I don't see what the big deal is. But I have been on calls with Fonda and some of his officers here in Apalach and they'll pick one dog up, put it in the truck, and go for another one that's running up down the road that citizens have complained about. And while they doing that, the people gather around, open the damn gate, and let the first dog out. And cussing and berating the off, the county officers. That's the reason we would like the police to respond.
Yep.
But nobody responds and these officers are not, they, they can't arrest nobody. I mean, they're out there in harm's way. And I think that the officers of the two municipalities ought to respond and help defuse the situation.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than the officers having to take all the verbal abuse and everything else, threats to their life and everything else about messing with dogs, but because people love their dogs about as much as they do the children. And I understand that. And that's why the police department don't want to get involved because these people are so adamant about their dogs and their pets and what they gonna do to you if you put your hands on them and all of this. I've been there. And if you don't believe it, somebody needs to ride with them and listen to the kind of abuse that our animal control officers receive. But you know, if, it's, it's up to the city, but that needs to be made a point that you can't, cannot, if they decide not to participate and we go back to our original ordinance where we only respond outside the municipalities, then I don't think they can hire their own officer, truck, they haven't had a place to put the animals once they pick them up. But the county is still helping. We're paying more than half of the salaries of these people. Plus, we're going to have to provide them a truck. Plus, we got to pay for the gas. And then they go out there on the side of the road and get cussed at. It ain't fair. And I, I think it's a very nominal fee to, to have this service provided to you by the county. Because if you try to provide it yourself, you're not going to be able to do it. I mean, so if they don't want to do it, I want to make a motion to direct the attorney to draft an ordinance up and go back to what we used to do. And I'm going to put that in the form of a motion. Now, I don't want this ordinance adopted until you have this meet, but I want him to be prepared and not push it down the road another two or three months. I want to direct, in my motion, direct the attorney to, to draft the ordinance. And if we can't get no participation, or one city wants to participate and the other one don't, then we'll provide that service for the city that wants to participate. But these officers have to respond. They don't want to do it because it causes human conflict with them too. You know, but you're putting our county officers and our county animal control officers in harm's way because they have no authority to make people back up and quit berating them and quit cussing and quit threatening them. So, you know, I'm going to make that in the form of a motion. I don't know if I'll get a second on it, but I'm going to make that in the form of a motion.
Would you add to it, if you will? Add on, make sure that the city, both city, get a couple of, whoever, they'll know what's going on.
They're supposed to be at this meeting with him.
I know, but.
But, yeah, boy.
Mr. Chairman.
But I'm, I mean, you know, if they
We'll have to have a public hearing to adopt the ordinance.
Yeah.
And they can come and say what they want to say, but.
Okay, yeah, I got them. Go ahead.
I want to keep everything just exactly as, as it is in this conversation. Michael, advise me, do you think that the Humane Society might have any interest in amending the animal control officer activities? Now, I realize there's two different entities there, but do you, do you, because they're, they are so bonded in many ways anyway with our animal control department. Do you see any, is there any thoughts on that?
I don't see any, uh, I think that, like you said, Commissioner, two separate agencies. One is government, one is nongovernmental. So I, I, I don't see, especially over the animal control, uh, officer because he's bound by the ordinance.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
And, um, and rules, so no, I don't.
Okay.
To, to short answer to your question.
Okay, thank you.
Got a motion on the floor.
I have something for discussion, Mr. Chairman, please. Michael, when you're having the meeting with the city of Carebel, I, I think we also need to make sure, if, if the board's agreeable to this, that they understand that when we're talking about animal control, we're talking about domestic animals.
Yes, that's important.
We're not talking about, because we're talking about dogs and cats and, we're talking about pets. We're talking about domestic animals.
Yeah, good point.
Uh, because I, I know that there are some situations, I just don't think we need to put any of our officers in.
Yeah.
And also, uh, with this, I'm, I'm thinking I'm remembering correctly. I know we're asking the city to respond with officers, but unincorporated Franklin County, are we going to have the sheriff office responding to calls as well?
I think it should be the same, yes.
Because it's not, yeah, it's not just people in the cities are going to have problems with their pets. It's going to be all over, so.
Yeah.
If that wasn't in there, I think it needs to be added.
Well, go for the goose, go for the gun now. All right, y'all, y'all through discussing? I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Jones. Ain't no more discussion, ain't no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
So, C, uh, we're up to D now. Uh, the first Census Complete Count Committee meeting was held on Friday, November 10th at 1:30 PM. Representatives from the city of Apalachicola, Franklin County schools, and different committee members were part of, I didn't say that correctly, of Ms. Ramirez's U.S. Census Bureau training presentation. There was a lot of valuable, valuable information, along with eye-opening questions and answers segment that showed how important the census count is to the county and to the school district funding. There's this misconception that the school goes by their number of students and that we found out that's not necessarily the case. The census rules that funding too. What is needed on the committee is members from different unincorporated areas of the county that could assist with focusing on areas where residents did not complete the online census survey. So we're all going to get this little card in the mail that you go online, you put in your PIN number, and that's how you fill out the survey. Am I using the right word, Pat? Survey? So now, if you don't do that, here comes a knock on your door. And so we need people in each area to tell us how to focus on that group of people that we don't think did not go online and do it. How can we get to them? Is there any? Can we hold, uh, days at the library that we could use the computers at the library to encourage these people to come and file? Because of course, census equals money. Um, you're probably contacted by the chair, Ms. Pat O'Connell, about suggesting a member from your district to serve. If you have someone to suggest today, let me know at the end of today's meeting, or you can just contact, uh, Pat herself.
Mr. Chairman, on this particular issue, Mike, is there any ways to run something in the paper?
Yes.
So that the citizens of Franklin County know how important it is that they fill out this information?
Yes.
Public service announcements on the radio, blah, 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 and let them know that federal dollars are attributed to this census count. It's very important that they respond to it.
As a matter of fact, there are ads that, uh, Ms., Ms. Ramirez, Evelyn was, is going to send us that we could then in turn spread throughout the newspaper, to the radio station, uh,
Why don't she do it?
Evelyn?
She's the representative?
No, that's what you have, you, what's it called? Your Complete Count Committee. That's what we're for. That's the steering committee.
What does, what does she do?
She goes to like, was it 12 different counties, I believe? I can't remember the number, and she, she trains, she trains the committee to, to, to do all this work in county. Yeah, that's, that's how it works.
Say, this is what you need to do. If you don't, you're going to lose federal dollars.
Yeah, basically.
End of story.
End of story. And so at some point, we've got, the steering committee will approach the board for a small, uh, most of it will go for advertising, a small budget nominal fee. I, no, don't look at that, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner, that we have to pay.
What's, okay, anyway.
See?
Mr. Chairman.
I, 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 I use
I understand.
Hey, Dave, can I just supplement?
We had to pay the cost.
Yeah, and I think, I'll say this, I think they said the best multiplier is fifty cents per resident, correct? And so, the last time, we had eleven thousand something. Yeah, Sheila looked at the attorney and was like, whatever, but yeah.
So, we're gonna have to come up with sixty-five hundred dollars or six thousand dollars?
I would say about five, yeah. Well, up to, I love to use this term, up to. And we use it to help with advertising, maybe banners, you know, t-shirts.
Who's paying these people going around knocking on the door?
Uh, the, the, the federal government will.
Us government.
They say paying something?
Yeah, the federal government, yeah. During, during the staring committee meeting that we, this meeting here, and I, and now, Pat, I think, uh, Mr. Conville will, will appreciate what I said. I said, we have to be very careful how we present this to the Board of County Commissions, because they will look at it as an unfunded mandate.
We're so used to it.
And so, we're having that discussion right now, so now you understand what I was saying. So, uh, yes, Commissioners, the, 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 the federal government has basically shifted the cost to the local counties, and the cities too.
We get a good deal.
What you need, Paperman?
I, this is, as a member of the Appalachia Cola.
Give me your name for the.
Oh, David Adlerstein, member of the Appalachia Cola Census Committee.
All right.
I just want to supplement Michael's report. Appalachia, we have one. Um, the chairman is Pam Richardson, I'm on it, Barry Hand is on it, um, a number of other people. And we've met a couple times, and the, we're trying to coordinate in the, um, around, a, middle of April and March and April, a, at Holy Family, we're gonna set up some computers. We're gonna have like a Census Counts Day program to get people to come out, and we'll assist them. And we're hopefully gonna work with, uh, the county committee to kind of get a joint statement out there, and I'm gonna be covering the paper. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to, do Caribou have that one?
Yes. Yes, they have their own committee also.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, y'all, oh, they'll be working together all.
Yeah, we're hoping that it right works as one, so the, whatever limit of money we have in the budget goes further with advertising, encouraging everybody to, to fill out this census.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Michael, I got an idea that maybe can help in my, or, unincorporated Franklin County. I know that it wouldn't be a problem with East Point Water and Sewer, because I've already spoken to Mr. Billy Fuentes, our director, about it. Anything, if you can come up with a wording of something that we can attach and put as a note on water bills or something out, we could be able to do that both in East Point and on St. George Island with the water department on the island. And, you know, if it's leading up to a time where we're gonna have something set up at the libraries, that, that might be a very cheap way to advertise.
It is, Commissioner, and we talked about that, and I, I'll just say it in this term, Pat has a guy for that. She basically has a guy for quite a few of the, the seats on the staring committee, media, uh, reaching out to the churches and different things. But yes, using the water districts, it's a very good idea, we could tag something in everybody's water bill. Yep, good job.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
This is worth fourteen thousand dollars per head that we count, that I read in your, that, that, Pat. So, it is very important to find everybody out there. And I think that the five thousand dollars or so we may spend on advertising is a good deal compared to the benefits we'll get long-term.
Uh, minor two items are information items, is, uh, if you have any questions, let me know. One is about Duke Energy changing out all the light fixtures, they're, actually, I like them, it's a couple of years, we can perish, how long? They said they were gonna do that two years ago, a year and a half, anyway. Well, the hurricanes slowed things down, so, you know, that, that, that's understandable.
Been a while, but listening to your second item there with MediaCom, they're saying more and more people are streaming and going to Hulu, so they're getting away from the cable companies, so for them to keep going, they have to up the charge. What, what they gonna do is push a bunch more people to go to them services.
Yeah, it sounds counterproductive. You mean, at the very end of the meeting, what, what the commissioner was referring to is that MediaCom sent a letter to the county about a rate increase, and their justification for the rate increase is that they're losing customers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I couldn't believe it.
I thought you, when you lose customers, you lower your price, but, you know.
They say the, the providers, I mean, the, uh, stations are charging more.
Yep.
And they got less customers, so they going up, because they losing customers going to DirecTV and all these other streaming services and everything, yeah. Well, you keep gouging the few that you got left, they gonna leave too.
That's, hey.
Then you gonna be out of business.
Everybody have their own business model, I guess, but, yeah.
Okay.
And of course, my last item is about the ad in the paper for the part-time, uh, just letting you guys know, they are advertising for the part-time, uh, library assistant in Caribou. Speaking of which, I just want the board to know, I'm, I'm not hiding or have your new library director locked away in a room somewhere. He just had a lot to accomplish here, he had to deal with the recommendations from the labor attorney, and then actually learn all the day-to-day management stuff, so he'll be at one of your upcoming meetings. But he will be here along with, um, Kate from the Library Advisory Board to officially introduce him to, to you guys. Actually, I have a meeting with him on Wednesday to see how things are going, and talk about a couple of things.
Has anybody up here seen him or met him?
Haven't met him, but I need, I, we want to meet him.
Okay, um, do you all want to meet him one-on-one before he comes to the board, or?
No, I, I don't want one-on-one, there's too much stuff getting started.
Okay.
But I'm gonna say, that lady was up here earlier, spoke, said that, uh, talking about paying, you know, county with the grants and all.
Yeah.
Her name wasn't even mentioned in this, it was the lady that just left.
Oh, okay. I mean, on a public.
Her name wasn't even mentioned in it.
Okay. And Commissioners, that is my report, and bear with me with the agenda, as you see, I'm continually tweaking. As we go along, hopefully by the first of the year, we'll have a perfect one.
Okay.
Oh, he's right here.
Alan.
Yes, he sneaked in right behind me, Commissioner.
Okay, next, we'll go back to Mr. Pierce.
I actually have three items, so I don't know how you're gonna tweak things when I just keep bringing them up.
How does that happen at thirty-two?
The, he, don't let me leave the room. Okay, item sixteen A is really the only thing left on my written report. At the last meeting, I had a long report regarding a study to be done on Alligator Point. The study would focus on alternatives to erosion and flood protection besides the standard beach inertia approach. The board voted to allow the ARPC to do the study, and the final hours of putting together the documents, the FDIP announced that their share of funds could not go directly to the ARPC. But what happened, come to the county, total project's still fifty-nine thousand dollars, and FDIP is paying thirty-six, uh, thirty-six, three-twenty-three. All parties still want to see the project forward, the ARPC still wants to do the study, so I, I now recommend the board make an application to FDIP, which I already have ready for you to sign, consistent with the scope of work the ARPC has already submitted for thirty-six, three-twenty-three, and that upon award of the grant, the board will allow the ARPC to do the work. The county will just see the FDIP funds and then reimburse the ARPC when the work is done. As the board mayor called, the FDIP work has to be done by April of next year, so this is a short-term project. The rest of the study will be funded by, directly to the ARPC by the Corporate of Alabama Mississippi Sea Grant Program, so we only have to deal with the FDIP study. So, board action submitted grant application to FDIP for thirty-six, three-sixty-three to fund the study the ARPC, ARPC has agreed to do.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, seconded by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimously.
Thank you, now, just two minor items, one, Clay Cannon and I were just on the phone wheeling dealing with FEMA regarding Alligator Point, so we are making some headway as far as at least getting people to pay attention to, let's get something done. Uh, we may be, I say, maybe, we may be on Alligator Point tomorrow, uh, trying to look at the scope one more time to make sure we all understand what we're trying to build.
Will they be bringing any money with them?
No, but this is a necessary step, because the guy who's gonna sign, who's coming, may be the one signing off on the scope of work.
Okay.
Just to give you a short story, basically, when FEMA was down here before, they had three scopes of work depending on the old Hermine Storm, the, some new Michael and some new Michael over here, and you had three different parts all going in different directions, and we had did one construction project, putting it all together, and they're like, well, you got three parts, no, we have one project, anyway. So, we think we got that resolved.
Good.
We hope. My last item is, just to carry on something we talked about last time briefly, Commissioner Parrish had talked about the change of scope. The state of Florida was doing the water wars, and just to let you all know, last night, on the Wall Street Journal, it's their online edition, they have a story, it may be in their printed edition, where Ricky Banks, our local Ricky Banks, is quoted in the Wall Street Journal, uh, describing what is going on as far as his opinion on the water wars. And yes, the Wall Street Journal confirms what Commissioner Parrish said, the state of Florida is approaching this now as a battle about ag, ag water, not urban water with Atlanta, they are now looking at the southern farmers in Georgia as being part of the problem, which is a shift, you know, I don't know how it's gonna play. So, that, that apparently is what's happening.
Okay.
It's online, February 1st, three. Okay, that's my report.
Anybody got anything else from Mr. Pierce? Keep up the good work, sir. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Sheila.
Just one action item for the board's consideration, this is a contract for the services to administer the HHRP grant, that is the Hurricane Housing Recovery Program, so probably one point two million dollars. There is a, essentially, a fifteen percent administrative, uh, portion to this grant that will be used to pay both for the administration of the grant, as well as certain costs associated with the grant. It became apparent shortly after we received the grant, even though the state had approved it in July, we only got the grant fairly recently. But after we received it, it became apparent that there needed to be a new contract with, with Ms. Lori Switzer, who is your existing ship administrator, for her to administer this new grant, so I have prepared this contract, I have discussed it with Ms. Lori Switzer. I provided a copy to the board via email, uh, last week, it was Tuesday, Wednesday. So unless the board has any questions with me, I am, uh, prepared to present this contract for your consideration and recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastis, seconded by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimously.
Commissioners, that's the only action item I have for my report.
Anybody got anything else from Mr. Sheila? All righty, keep up the good work.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner's comment?
I have something, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I would like to just invite all of the rest of you, this coming Thursday, we're having a, uh, first annual lighting of the Palms on St. George Island. Uh, I think the parade's gonna line up around four-thirty, everything's gonna kick off shortly thereafter, to be followed up the next day. In East Point, we're having the Christmas parade, and it's gonna line up around four o'clock behind Sellers Plaza. So, Appalachia had some events right around the past Thanksgiving, uh, we're celebrating, and then it'll move on to Caribou in the middle of the month.
Okay. Any more Commissioner's comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, um, observe how wonderfully, uh, last Friday's Appalachia Cola Celebration for Christmas beginning was. That evening, after Santa Claus arrived, I think it was almost standing room only here in this town for quite a while. I thought that the luminaries looked excellent, the vendors were open with lights on, and, uh, there was a tremendous number of people that I met that weren't from around here, that, that actually make special time to come here to Franklin County. So, we're beginning to see a, a bigger influx with regard to our tourist opportunities. The other issue that I'm beginning to be thinking about in my district is relative to the Alligator Harbor and the oyster leases that are out there. It has been made real clear to me that, uh, the state has, um, uh, sold those leases, and they've made money on it, and, uh, the leases are actively going on, but the infrastructure has never been considered to support those leases. Where are the boat ramps, where is the opportunity for, uh, facilitating seeding of these oysters and all kinds of things? And I think that it's a, that this is a, a bigger picture than, than just oyster leases, that what is the infrastructure needed to protect them? And I want to be thinking as we go forward, how the state can help us in improving infrastructures, such as boat ramps and, uh, sources of seeding and so on.
Parking.
Parking, exactly. Um, you can, here's a good example of it, at that area called Surf and Sand, uh, there at Alligator Point. I've been taught that that's, that's, I see that's the end of a road, that's really not a boat ramp. But there are so many commercial, um, commercial fishermen that are out there, um, going to their oyster leases, they're parking and overflowing onto the highways and so on, and, uh, some of them even been ticketed apparently on Alligator Drive. So, for a short term, we may want to think of some possible, uh, tag technique, where we maybe have a window sticker, something that means that they are a commercial oysterman in that area, uh, relative, different than maybe a recreational person for the time being. Something to think about, anyway. What are, what are your thoughts on that?
No, they always come up with one side of the story. They always, the first thing they come in here, they want them three or four hundred thousand dollars, they talking about they doing a study. That study ain't doing them putting money in their pocket, because if they'd have studied, right, they'd have had room for parking and everything else.
Relative to the state, you mean?
Yeah, the state, the state, they, they over that part. They, they know them people, how they expect all this to happen.
Sure, without.
Without all that, they know what go along with all, it's just like this morning when they come in behind that walkway, they telling, hey, the county got to keep it up. Well, the state of Florida, they got a prison system, why they can't keep it up? That's who should be keeping that side, because they got a prison, they got prisoners up from one end of the state to the other, can clean that stuff. But they telling, we gonna have to hire a person. Not in the budget, but it's gonna be in the budget next, next budget, we gonna have to have an extra man just, just to do that.
It wouldn't be built then.
I know, whenever it gets built. We gonna have to hire a person, but they should do the thing, right, when they doing all these studies, they should have, they, with the people, they know people got to park.
Right.
They know people gonna be coming in there, they need extra parking, because people gonna be coming in there being nosy and wanting to know what's going on.
Yes, sir. That's right, sure, and that happens.
All this should have been in the study.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, Commissioner Vol, you know, the counties offered the state two different options, and they have not responded to either one. One is the old FSU Marine Lab, it's still sitting down, there's valuable land that's not being used by the public. And a lot of people could benefit from that, not just the, the family law culture, but other people, because it's a perfectly usable piece of land with some improvements to it. Their other is to come back on the main line of ninety-eight and, and get some land from the St. Joe Company and build a boat ramp there, and we've heard no response from either one.
Or the Mormons, they have land.
Or the Mormon, or the Mormons, I mean, sorry, Mormons.
And I would just, one thing, Alan, do, do you think, we've had no response, facetiously speaking, maybe they didn't get the letter, let's do it again, second request.
They got the letter.
Can we do that technique?
For the FSU Marine Lab?
Yeah.
I mean, I've had people that.
The letter just has never been responded to, it's dead.
Uh, well, they haven't responded, but I got acknowledgement that they received the letter.
You did?
Some, the problem is, you had residents there that did not want it there, and so they kind of leaned on their legislators to say, look, we don't want this there. I mean, I've, I've had a discussion with a, with an associate director at, um, at DAX.
Yep.
Tell me, well, Michael, the, the people didn't want it, so we're not even pushing it.
I'm hearing that in my district.
That's correct, they don't want the oyster boats going down.
On, on the road.
Mainly the people at Alligator Point don't want nobody down there. There ain't no parking for them, they're using restrooms in the front yard.
Yep.
But they don't want us to build a park, because that will attract more people down there.
I understand.
So, but get to your point, the states wanted to issue all these leases.
Yep.
After we opposed it, and the number, one of the main reasons we opposed it, because there was no infrastructure there. On this little boat ramp you talking about, you might can park three trucks and three trailers from the water to the road, the hard road out there, and that's all you got, unless you park into somebody's yard.
Like if you get.
Well, they created this problem. And they, the state, needs to go somewhere and build a ramp. They, the state, needs to go to St. Joe and get some land and build parking and a ramp. They need to do that, because they created this problem. You don't create a problem and then pass it to somebody else to solve it. So, this request that we be, uh, that we have been asking the state about, we need to send them a demand letter and tell them to correct their own problem. Let them maintain the boat ramp, let them buy the land for the parking and make parking. That ain't our responsibility to, to straighten out what they created, which is exactly what Commissioner Lottler was trying to say.
Yeah.
So, the next time we write a letter, that's, that's the way we need to go. Not asking for FSU Marine Lab. If they want to take FSU Marine, Marine Lab, or the old one, which is held by the Board of Trustees, and they want to turn that, that'll be between them and the citizens of Alligator Point, not between the citizens of Alligator Point and the county.
Yeah.
And when it gets to this hatchery you talking about, I got more emails about this proposed zoning change.
Isn't that something?
Between, between them and Joe Biden and Kamala Harris fills my iPad up every day.
Yeah, yeah.
Be a hundred emails on it, and fifty of them be from Alligator Point, and none of them wants that thing.
That's exactly right.
None of them, I ain't got the first one that says, yeah, we want it.
And this is a good example of how the state needs to look at what our folks are saying when they're, they don't give us the infrastructure we need.
Yeah.
That's right. Do we have any other examples?
Did you find some way to block some of these licks and stuff? We a year out, man, I'm telling you, they, they gonna blow my little iPad up.
I'll try my best, Commissioner.
Every day, you got to go, you gotta go and do it, you can't just clear all, because some of these emails are pertinent, from you and the attorney, whoever. So, you can't just go through, click all and just delete everything every day, you got to go one by one and delete all this stuff.
I'll try to step up the filter, sir.
They burnt mine up, Michael's got it right now.
You burned your computer up?
I ain't joking, I ain't no joking, we a year out.
Well, Commissioner Vol, back to your question, I mean, you know, can, can the county regulate who parks down there? Yeah, you could.
Sure.
But, that's not gonna solve the problem, because there's, there's too many people trying to use a very small area.
Is there any other example like Alligator Harbor in the county? Is there any other example like Alligator Harbor in the county where the state has done something, it didn't provide the app, infrastructure to back it up? Do you have any other?
They don't know about that.
Well, now that I think about it, I mean.
Okay.
On the top of my head, I mean, you have.
They, they let, they sold all them licenses for, for the, for the wire, called Archer's, they ain't provide the numbers. They ain't provide enough shield to put back there. Same thing, neither.
Well, Commissioner Parrish, you know, the, the other meetings we went to about the, the other leases they wanna do on this side, they assume that we can use a, a, a buddy ward landing, you know, and all that, so they assume that we're gonna use county parks that are there. That's, that's their something.
There ain't no park down there, dude.
Here's the thing, the state issues a license that they tell you straight out, because I've asked DAX before, they said, look, we're not responsible for infrastructure, we just issued a license, how they get there and how they, where they park, that's not our concern. That's their response.
How much they co-charged for them license?
That's a good question.
About 10 grand, uh, per acre.
Uh, they, they, well, they ought, they ought to be able to bill us, you know, a whole lot of stuff. How many, how many license they giving out?
30 or 50 down there now.
It's about 48 down there right now, and they ain't got nowhere lots of boat or park or nothing else.
They should pay for something.
$48,000.
They should pay for something. That's a lot of money for them, what, what they doing with it.
Well, the lease itself, I think, is $500, but the, but the cost of getting all the equipment is a lot more. I mean, I think what you, what the state of Florida receives is like $500, uh, but, but the cost of operating a lease is a lot more.
Well, somebody bought a bunch of the leases from the state. When they got it, and sold certain person, a terrible level.
It could be a secondary market.
But he did, and they sold it for $10,000 a lease, because the boys in Caribou just bought some of them from a certain guy from Tallahassee that went through the legislature and got them, they $10,000 for them to get them.
That doesn't seem right. No, public property like that.
Any more public comment? Well, I'll tell you what. Franklin County, I wanna admit, it's the holidays approaching us, and Merry Christmas. Me in the jar.
Now, we have one more meeting.
We got one more, yeah.